Work session to order, it's 11:10. Dr. Mackey's, I think, answering some questions for the media this morning. So he'll be joining us in a few minutes. Like to thank each of you, all of our guests that are here today. Just want to remind you, as I did last month, if you could silence your devices. And if you're in the meeting, be in the meeting, as I like to say. We need all of you listening collectively. This board has got a robust agenda today and some really important items on the agenda that we're going to be focusing on. And I just ask if you would, please provide input to the board or to our leadership team here at the State Department. I will keep us on track, or try to, best I can today, so that we move along to lunch and then out after lunch, hopefully, like we were last month, 2:00, 2:30. Many of you are ve- well, all of you are very busy and have jobs to do, and we do not want to take up your time and keep you from doing the important work that you're doing. Before we begin this morning, let's commit our agenda in prayer. Bow with me, please. Father God, we come before you. We commit this important work to you today, Lord, on behalf of the students in Alabama. Father, we know that we don't have all the answers, but we pray for insight. We pray for every child that is going to school today in Alabama. Every single one of them, Lord, we want to have a safe and successful school year. We pray for those that transport our children, Lord, and we just pray for those SROs that keep our schools safe, Father. And we just put before you the children of Alabama, and we pray that our students, Father, would be head and shoulders above their peers this year, Lord, and that they would excel in all areas, both of the mind and the body, Lord, and help us to be the very best examples that we can be for our students and for our communities. It's in the matchless name of Christ that we pray. Amen. All right. Again, I welcome you all back. We're going to begin with our first item, which is setting the cut scores for the revised A-CAP reading assessment. Mr. Markham?
Maggie Hicks.
Maggie.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And board members, just want to remind you, if you would, since we've got a good bit of material to cover this morning, if we could hold our questions till the end of the presentation. If it's something that is going to be really detailed, we may want to write those questions down. I would ask that you write those questions down, and we'll get those in, and then Superintendent will answer those in his report. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Proceed. Thank you so much. Okay, so the topic today is, of course, setting the new cut, reading cut score for this upcoming school year. We're going to look at the, some data that was passed on to you all, I think, a few weeks ago. We're going to look, talk about the recommendations from our committees that met back in May. As the committee's had, we reviewed the impact, what is considered the impact data. So they looked at the data for this particular year. If we were to look at the cut scores, we had standard setting, they looked at all of the information that was taken. We looked at the reading only, and we're only talking about the reading cut score. When we look at, if we were to look at, no adjustment, as you remember, that our third grade cut score right now is 452. So these were the recommendations from our standard setting. If we made no adjustment, that cut score would move to 473. That meant, means that with the data that we have for this year, would be 32.1% of students below that cut score. If we look at one, minus one standard errors of measurement, the cut score would be 454, and that means that 24.4% of the students would be below that cut score, below grade level reading. But if we go to the minus two, like we did a couple of years ago, then the cut score would move to 435, and that means that 17.4% of the students would be below grade level reading. Okay, that is our third grade. Continue. And if we look at second grade, our cut score, as it stands today for second grade, is 448. So if we made no adjustment from standard setting, the committee recommended 487. That means that 39.8% of the students would be below. If we go minus one, then the cut score would be 471, and that would be 32.4% of the students below the cut score, which is below reading. And then minus two, with, the cut score would be 455, and that means that 25.1% of the students would be below. And then just as a recap, as recommended by the educators with no adjustment, 487 for second grade, third grade, 473. And if we adjust it like we did two years ago, minus two, 455 for second grade, and grade three, 435.
Yes, ma'am, when it's appropriate.
Maggie, did you have anything else to say?
No, ma'am, I'm just presenting. So I think good.
So, thank you. Apologize, I've stayed, had a couple of press questions, but, so, you have this before you. Let me kind of, I apologize, of course, I missed the first part of Maggie's presentation, but I've seen it. We've met with a technical advisory committee, which recommends the minus two SEM. We stick with that. And you remember, the reason for that is to get more than a 90% assurance that it's the right score. So there's, the score is set using three metrics. So first, there's the, our DRC team is with us in the back, by the way, really good statisticians. And I appreciate, they, they were very patient with some of my questions, and then Maggie and Shantia, she, by the way, she came to y'all's resc- they came to your rescue, because after I asked you all those questions, they came back up after our, I guess, web meeting and said, "Let us go through it again with you." So, so I better, I, I understand how we, we've gotten here. So new test, so the old cut scores are not appropriate to apply to the new test. So first, I want to remind everybody that, I'm not sure Ms. Hicks mentioned that. We did that in May. That was not actually probably the appropriate thing to do, but remember, at the time, we didn't have new cut scores. We had to let people know if they needed to be at summer reading camp. So if anything, we probably over-identified third graders to go to summer reading camp, but, but I don't feel, I've lost a night's sleep over that, because we identified students that are within the minus two SEM, who were on the bubble, and them going to summer reading camp did not hurt them, because they're, they may have been on grade level, but they were barely on grade level. So, so that was fine. But when we get to the bigger supposition of retaining children, now, it worries me a little more if we don't. We obviously can't apply the old cut score. So we're back to you. The Literacy Act says the board has to set the score, which we, we retain, consider students for retention. Remember, there's another step beyond this, and we all know that, but where we began the consideration for retention. So with the new test, more rigorous, more based on the science of reading, and less on the old comprehension pieces that were in the, the old standards, then I feel like certainly our teams have done a good job. So the DRC team made a recommendation, they went into a community of, committee of educators, elementary teachers, early childhood teachers, and said, "Do these make sense? And what do you, how would you see that they need to be adjusted?" And then that went, the third step, to our TAC committee. I did not meet with those elementary educators, but I've met with both of the other committees, and feel very good about where we are. Our TAC team, which, they're pretty adamant that we stick with the minus two SEM, since this will be our first year of new test, new retention. Remember that what we would do over time is that the way, if it works statistically, because I understand statistics, and makes me a little nervous to say it, because there are real statisticians in the back, but over time, if this is the right cut score, things should begin to move to the mean, and we should see that the children who are, that we're promoting are able to pick up and read well in fourth grade. If that doesn't happen, then we'll need to revisit the score over time, because it may mean that the score needs to be adjusted up or down, but we'll have to look, we'll have to look at that every year, so, starting next year. And not by next fall, remember, but by the end of those children's fourth grade year. So we have to look at the children who are just above. Did they, did they do okay in fourth grade? Or would they have been better off being retained? And we'll, those are decisions the board will be making in '25, '26, and beyond. Every year, we'll have to begin looking at those things. Over time, we would hopefully go to a minus one SEM, and we would tighten that up, because we would have greater assurance that the number's the right number. The reason we go to minus two standard errors of measure is to make sure that we are not retaining children that are in that gray area and should not be retained. So we're trying to give the greatest benefit to the students. Now, I will also say, I have Bonnie Short somewhere, I hope, there she is, the short, but realize that a child that scores a 454, a child that scores a 456, there's really not a lot of reading difference there. One will be considered for retention, one for promotion. So one of the things that Ms. Short and her team are working very diligently at is to make sure that those children who promote on the fourth grade, that they're a 456, or they're a 460, but they're close, that they are continuing to offer supports for those children, because they're going to be asked to read more and more complicated texts as they enter intermediate and middle school. And we can't just drop them off and say, "Oh, they made it to fourth grade, now they're good on their own." ARI by law, by the legislature, as you know, restricts ARI's involvement to only grades K3, something I hope eventually gets changed, because as you remember, the original ARI, we were allowed to do intermediate grades, and that, so we were continue, able to continue to support those children, but then they, that's no longer allowed. But, that just means we can't use ARI funds to do it, it doesn't mean we can't do it. So we are scrapping together other funds, and we've used significant amounts of our ESAR funds to build supports for these intermediate and middle school children, so they'll continue to, to get supports in later grades. Yes, ma'am?
I'm, I understand, because I've been working with this, but it's sort of, I think it needs to be, and I'm sorry, Maggie, I should be speaking to you. When it says, "As recommended by the educators," are you talking about that very first column is what they're edu- but that is not the minus two standard?
They also looked at that and recommended that. They were okay with going to minus two, because that's also proposed to them.
Correct.
Because they, they look at all aspects of it. We take them, when they make their recommendation, and I may have to get Rick, but, but once they make their recommendation, then we look at it that way, but then they're, they're looking at impact data, that if we do go, like, been recommended, the minus two, what that would look like.
Okay, so you are saying that initially, that's what they were looking at, but after discussion and deciding, what was it that you said, that we would be more of a, give the greatest benefit to those?
Definitely.
They went with those minus two, as a recommendation?
Right, and then that was, all of this was also delivered to our technical advisory team, who was in line with that as well, and they, they very adamantly said, "We need to go with the minus two."
I guess my question is, when you say "they," will you say who "they"?
Technical, I'm sorry, technical advisory.
No, uh-uh. As recommended by educators, who?
The educators were the committee of second and third grade teachers that we had, that come together during standard setting that looked at, what they had, did was, they looked at all the standards, the performance level descriptors, and every item of that test. And then they were able to look at the data that went along with that, how the students actually scored. And then they were able to, they used, we used the bookmark method, I think we've already explained that.
Right.
But yes, that's, this is the data that-
And so that's how we got the first column?
Yes, yeah.
And then, how, again, did we get to the second column?
The second column is when they look at the data, and I'm going to let Rick, because it does get a little technical. Rick?
And Maggie, how many were "they"? How many educators? I mean, just a ballpark, we don't need exact.
It's probably around 30.
I mean, again?
Around 30.
Okay.
Usually it's around 30.
Oh, my God. The, I, I, Rick Picardo from the Education Corporation.
Sorry.
The, the committee recommend, of educators, was part of the committee, that recommended cut scores for the new ELA tests, as well as reading. So the way it worked, just as Maggie mentioned, is they looked at the items from the new tests, and they thought very deeply about the knowledge of the skills that were expected of students who was at or above reading. There was a committee of about 15 educators that came together to look at the ELA tests, and then seven educators who focused deeply on these reading cut scores. These educators used the bookmarked teachers, Maggie said, to make the recommendations. So we can say that the educators, as you're pointing out in this first column, recommended these cut scores, 47, 473. So those cut scores are tied to the knowledge of the skills that are expected of students who are on or below grade level, at or below grade level. The minus two SEM, that, that takes into account the conditional standard error of measurement. So that's the, the amount of statistical precision that we have around any point on a test scale, or around any set of cut scores. The, the way we think of it is, if you gave a student a test, and then were to give the student a test again, you'd expect the second time, their score would be similar to the first time, but not exactly the same. That, if you did that again and again, the distribution of scores would be defined by, or be described by, the standard error of measurement. By lowering the cut scores by two standard errors of measurement, what you're saying is, we want to be absolutely sure, if a student falls below this adjusted cut score, their level of reading skill probably is below our expectations. We are 90% plus confident that their actual level of reading is below the expectations of educators.
What is the distribution, you used the word, but as far as the number of people, which is actually, you said 17 and five?
Yes.
And then, where, where did you get them from? What parts of Alabama? Or what is their background, grade level, et cetera, experience? When you have to describe the committee members, how would you describe them, using those?
Absolutely. They came from all over the state.
They came from all over the state, and-
But if you only have that many, that can't be from all over the state.
Right, right.
But, but do you represent, for example, a mountain road, or a, what's it, we discussed Sumter County this morning, or Athens? I'm just thinking of places in different parts of the state, in Gulf Shores, or how, what kind of distribution, what types, size, et cetera, the schools? What, what is their normal, what is their normal group of students? When I say "normal," I'm talking about their, who comes into their classroom? Who are they dealing with on a family basis? Do you have pretty much, do you, you know, the representation, if you select them from certain parts of my district, will be different from other parts of my district? I'm trying to get a grasp of who made the, the recommendations. And I understand the difference, which does concern me, it's not a lot, but it is enough to add some concern. But if you can give me a better description, instead of saying they're from all over, and I, I appreciate that, because I understand what you're saying. I would say that's a good point.
Okay, we do recruit from all over the state, and then, of course, we get those that are recommended for the summer. And the, and we can actually figure out, I mean, we figure out, we know who, who, from where they were from. This, within this committee, they were second and third grade teachers. They were actually in the classroom. We had a special ed teacher that was in there. I don't know the entire, but a majority of them, out of the seven, because we had one that got sick, who started out with eight, I think it was, on that. But they were second or third grade teachers. And they ranged from years of experience. I don't think we had anyone that was a first year teacher in there, but they ranged from many years of experience. And as far as where they were located throughout the state, we would just have to look at that and see.
If you can send that, I would appreciate it, just to acknowledge.
We can, yes, talk about the district, yes.
Thank you.
You brought up a good point. Is there any way you could provide maybe the systems that were represented?
And we, we sometimes struggle getting those committee members. And we have to, please go back and ask your districts to nominate those, because it's a continual process.
And, I'm sorry, did you ever put up the minus one SEM?
I did, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, you went, I didn't catch that one.
No, it's right there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's third grade.
Okay.
Yeah, that's third grade. We're going to go to second grade, yeah.
And I know that you're aware that other states are doing this same type of, using the same process and assessment and retaining students. Is this, how does this compare to, for example, Mississippi? And I know South Dakota is another state, and we're, we're talking about all over the country, and you know that, and you're, what, are you in Minnesota?
I, I live and work in California, but the DRC is based out of Minnesota.
Out of Minnesota. And so, the wide range, the differences, how does this fit in with what other states are doing in terms of your personal experience with the other states?
Well, I can say, I have worked with a couple of other states that are going through similar, or implementing similar policies, and the process they're using to establish these reading cut scores is very similar. So they are going to teachers first, to educators, to ask for a content link cut score recommendation, like, what does a student really need to know in order to meet this reading standard in grade three or grade two? And then they're turning to technical experts and saying, "How should we implement this cut score? Should we lower this cut score in order to make sure that if a student is subjected to, say, for example, retention, that we are absolutely sure that they really do fall below this cut score?" So the process itself is very, very intense.
And I think that's my biggest concern. We, we understand the impact that this will have on a child's life, and our hope is, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm pretty sure that our hope is that it will benefit the child. And at the same time, the educators will understand that they need to improve in certain areas. My concern is that it, and it's not really perception, but, but it's the reality that we are moving students on who still need a lot of help, and perhaps the fourth grade educators are not equipped, because they haven't had the same type of training, perhaps, that those from kindergarten through pure grade have hopefully benefited from in terms of training. I don't want to set it so low that we just continue, and I don't think you do either, move children on, and they still need that help. And at the same time, I don't want to penalize students who are probably equipped, you know, well, if they can do it, and they're right there on the verge at the end of the third grade, they can do it. But, and I think that's where that extra is built in, but if the educators recommend one cut score, if their background fits, and you respect that, then I don't want to lower it personally. That's me speaking for my personal opinion. That's, that's the only concern to me. Based on what you've shared, I respect their, their training, their backgrounds, their experience.
And what I was going to say is, educators, now, I mean, now this is a realism that third grade, this third grade class will have this piece in place. But, when I look at third grade, this should be our last gap measure, to catch the ones that will not be successful. If they're not ready at the end of first grade, don't wait till third grade. Retain them in first grade. Get them those solid foundational skills. Same thing, okay, whoop, maybe we missed little junior in first grade, let's grab one second. I want to see where we need, I worry more about moving a child on that's not ready than to keep one back that, you know, and I know that would be devastating, but I really worry that, we have done it for too many years, and then what happens to that child? And then without the training of those, and, and we have to be realistic in, in the fourth grade teachers, we're talking about all the fourth grade teachers. Some might be able to beautifully move on junior, some may not. And again, some of the numbers are getting higher, the higher they go in the, as far as advisors and stuff. I'm struggling.
Board members, you're going to have the next 30 days with this information, so please formulate your questions and get those to Dr. Mackey, so that he can follow up with each of you and the superintendent's report. Yes, ma'am?
But if, just say, Dr. Chestnut has a question. I want the question and the answer to me as well, because I, I learned from this discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
And let me just go back to something, remember that Maggie and Rick had said. So the educators did, they looked at the score, and they were also recommending the minus two SEM. Now, realize, if our educators had, they are most likely assuming that we would do the minus two SEM, because that's always the technical recommendation to make sure you capture the right group. I wouldn't want to mischaracterize those educators, because I think, I have not talked to any of them, but having been an educator, if I, if I were told, "We're not going to use the statistical measurement anymore, we're going to go with this score," I think you would have gotten a different recommendation from educators, because they built into their thinking that this bigger, that we'll use a statistically sound score, so that you know you have at least 90% reliability. Reliability, you adopt that higher score, it's, yes, it means we're going to retain a third of our third graders, but it also means your reliability drops down into more like 75%, not over 90%, which means for, you know for sure you will retain some children who should not have been retained. For sure, you know that. And I, well, while I share your concerns, I also can share, I, I mean, that, it, I, that's, I've spent a lot of time in the middle of the night thinking about that. I do not want to be holding back eighth graders, that I know for a fact are on grade level, but didn't have a good day of testing, and we held them back just because we wanted to have a different score. So we got to be really careful to balance that.
Right, but I'm, I know we're supposed to write these questions down, but this is not the only part of that retention. You know, they were able to do the portfolio, they were doing summer, I mean, I understand this is one part of it, so, I mean, I didn't want to, oh, to forget that that's not an important aspect, because the law has some very good, I keep using the word stopgap measures, but about which, you know, I'm speaking, you know, other avenues. And, so we do not want to retain children, but on the other hand, we will do them a grave injustice, moving them on.
And I think, going back to your statement about the first grade, that's what, we're not talking about retaining children after the first grade, or even the second grade, we're talking about children after the third grade, and so they've had an opportunity earlier, for several years, to ensure that children can read, and that's the thing that concerns me here. And I understand how the cut score works and the recommendations, but I still, if, if you told the same group of educators, "We can only select one," which one would they ultimately select? Because at heart, educators are concerned about the children in their own classrooms and those outside their classrooms. And so they're going to make sure that what they do is not going to cause harm. And that's where I do think, if we continue for the fourth grade, when does it stop if we don't do what the law requires, anyway? And that's where, go back to, if they made that recommendation, it must not have been horrible, it must have some credibility, and, and I think it probably does. But I think it does, actually, not probably. And so that's the way I'm looking at it, going back to your statement about the first grade, and I understand waiting until the third grade, but that's almost too late for children, you know?
How long will these be in? If we, depending on whatever vote is, for how long does that measure hold?
Well, maybe till the vote again. So what we would do-
But is it up every year for a vote, or?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just-
Probably not, probably, I would, I would recommend two years, that we would do two years, because it's a new, remember, it's a new test, new cut score that we would get. So if you say next year, we would only have, we'd have one year's data. Most likely, we'd need two years' data, and then come back, have another committee, we'd reconvene, I mean, there's, Ms. Hicks says they're always meeting, every summer, they're looking at some scores, and look at those scores again. So in, what are we, now, '23, so in the summer of '25, after the '25 results, would be the best.
So our last cut scores were the two years? Is that how long we've had it?
The two years, yes. So if we did two years, we'd do two years with this one. I more recommend the minus two SEM, and then we will, and then it would be to revisit in two years, so '25, summer '25. The, I'm sorry, Dr. Chestnut, let me say this, I- Ms. Siggler brought something up she and I talked about briefly, but since she brought it up. So the, the idea we do have, we know retentions this year went up in first grade. We don't know why, but we, we keep up with that. And I would imagine there are lots of districts that are looking at their promotion policies in first grade. One of the things that the legislature changed the law now to say that the early, early years assessments we do should be measured, one of the ways they should be evaluated is based on their ability to predict A-CAP scores. That was when we first did the early child, the early years assessment, which remember preceded the Literacy Act. That was the intention. But then the Literacy Act kind of said we can't do that. But now they've amended the Literacy Act to say we should do what we were originally going to do in 2019. Y'all can see how I get CSOL too. So, so we'll go back and look at those early years assessments and their ability to, to project an A-CAP result, that's a deep statistical measure, I can't do that. And, but that will give our principals some better idea in the first grade of how their students are progressing toward A-CAP, which we did in second grade. There is a chance, a couple of you, and I won't name which board members, have asked me, could we work with DRC to develop a first grade reading test? This is the first they've heard of that. But, but it is possible. That would be something we could do. First grade's more difficult to develop a standardized test. It's just the attention span and all. But it's possible we could do, and it would not be for accountability, it would not be high stakes. But it's possible we could do a shorter test that would be fully aligned to our second grade and third grade tests that would give, maybe give a better, give people more comfort in where students were at the end of first grade. I don't, I've also been asked if we can do that kindergarten. I don't think you can do it to kindergarten. But just know we're, we'll, you know, we're always looking at ways to improve and that's something we are going to explore, not promising we can do it. So Rick, I didn't say we would do. I know that's difficult, but I know we're not the first state that's tried to do something like that too, so. Yes, ma'am, and I know Dr. Chestnut has a question.
I'm trying to gain some clarity. I want to make sure y'all understood what you said. With this chart that says that's recommended by educators. And I hear you say that they recommended the score 47 and 473, but they're not recommending the adjusted?
No, ma'am.
Or they recommend both?
They recommend both. Basically, they're making two recommendations. In a perfect world, if we absolutely knew that every child had a good testing day and that there are no problems with testing, no problems with children, everything went well, they recommend 487 as the most, like most, most number. But knowing that statistically, you always have this plus or minus grade area, they recommend that we use the minus two to make sure that we have at least 90% assurance that it's the right number.
It's the way it's- It looks, it looks as if they only recommend the first number.
Yeah, that's why I asked Maggie, I was, I'm sorry.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry. I have a comment. One thing I think going forward, we have to keep in mind, we've had the learning loss with COVID. We know that. I think we need to consider that when we look at setting the cut score. But also going forward, Dr. Maggie and, and Mackey and also Bonnie, in first and second grade, if we can try to get some things in place to better ensure that those students are equipped at the third grade level. And then after two years, perhaps when we come back, we then could look at a higher cut score. That's just for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
I am not surprised to hear that the retention in first grade is more this year. And I think it has a lot to do with the fact that we now have a way of looking at where our second graders are. And that probably, this is my guess, probably most teachers and administrators are saying, well, let's retain them in first grade instead of waiting to third grades. And I would think that that will be beneficial in the next couple of years as far as making the score to move on as a third grade.
I agree with you. I agree with you. So as, oh, yes, ma'am, we need to balance that because we know that the more a child is retained, the less likely that a child will graduate.
And that's a good point. I look to, Bonnie, you may can remember, but I think the law, even the Literacy Act says it cannot be retained twice. So if they retain a child in first grade, I'm recommending it, if the school rec, if they retain a child in first grade due to reading, then when they come to third grade, they cannot retain them again due to reading. So they can only retain a child once in grade K3. So I think you will see more of that. I've certainly heard lots of superintendents and principals say, and even when I was a principal, that was like the hard fact rule. And I tell you, it was, you used to have a really good case to retain a, retain a child in third grade at my school. Now, we retained a lot of first graders and kindergartners. But when a teacher wanted to retain a third grader, we, I had a personal conference with the teacher and the parent because there had to be a good reason for it. Because it's emotionally difficult to retain third graders.
And I, I'm, I'm more familiar with middle school. But at the middle school level, we talk about the damage that it does to the academic progress of a middle school child who has been retained. So, but the earlier they're retained, the easier it is for that child to continue. So third grade retention probably will go down, is my thought, because they will start earlier and address the issue.
Well, and also we have to remember now with more of the letters trained and the science of reading being taught to fidelity, I think it's going to come to, it will come to a point where the kids are going to get what they need and will become successful. And there will be a few that be at maturity, for those, oh, boy, I'm just kidding. For those individuals that should be, you know, sometimes, you know, we talk about the dangers of re, of retention, but we know the dangers that we keep moving those kids on that don't have the skill. So, you know, there we go again. But I do truly believe if we do the science of reading to fidelity, if we get the educators coming to us from the universities, coming with those skill sets, I think they're going to be cooking with gas like they did back when we initially started the ARI because we were doing it to fidelity. So that's my soapbox for the day.
Thank you. So in reason I said, as you, would you please collect questions? The calls, the public is just getting this information and asks, you go back into your districts. People may be asking questions. If you don't mind forwarding those to Dr. Mackey. He has promised to cycle those questions out to us in superintendent's reports so that we know what questions are being asked, that you all see the same questions. So thank you very much for your presentation today. Did you have anything else, Daya? Great. What's next, Dr. Mackey?
So next, so just to, Dr. Payne's going to come up and talk about our fiscal 24 operating budget with the department. As he makes his way up here, then just to reiterate what we said, just bring questions to us. You can certainly call me. Most of you have called me in the last, since the agenda went out last week, just kind of begun talking through this issue. And I'm glad to do that again more and more. And if we need to bring in Ms. Short or Ms. Hicks or anybody else in those discussions with the technical information we can't, we'll get you the information that was requested about more of the credentials, the teachers that looked into this. But the, the plan now, this is a voting, this will be a voting thing for the board. Because remember the Literacy Act says that you have to set that score. So, so I just want to be clear that I'm recommending what came to us through the two advisory committees and the teacher advisory committees to use the 473 as a basis, adjusted by two minus SEM, which is what they, all three committees recommended. We, we talked about third grade, remember there's a corollary to second grade too. The second graders won't be retained, but we'll be setting a corollary score for second grade two. So just remember that'll be on the agenda for next month. And then every year, this gets a little confusing, so I'm going to just do a short introduction. Remember we, we do two, we're, we're always operating, always in four budget years. So we are about to get the financial statements for the year that's ending. We're working in a current year, currently fiscal year 23. We are about to put in place the fiscal 24 budget, which you, of course, we talked about me this morning. And now we have already started the process of developing the fiscal 25 budget. And so there's always, really, we're always working in three years, but we've really got a year behind that we're still auditing and collecting. So this, what you're looking at now is the operational budget that goes into effect with the 24 budget, which we do after the legislature passes that. Then at the retreat, I know you've, or I know Dr. Richardson's going to talk about that, but she set aside some time for us to begin talking about the FY25 budget recommendation for the foundation program. That would come, we'll talk about it at the retreat, assuming that's what everybody wants to do. Then at the work session in September, so we'll, we use that initial to gather information from you. You're, we've already been gathering information internally. Then September work session, we'll spend a lot of time on that, answer questions in anticipation the board will vote on a recommendation to the governor at the October meeting. Because we're required to get your recommendation to the governor's office by November 1st. Then she's required to get it to the legislature by the first legislative day, which is the first Tuesday in February. So that gives them basically all of November, December, January to work on their bigger budget presentation. So it's, but what you're looking at today is not that big foundation piece. It's just the department's operational budget, which Dr. Payne and his team have been working on. And so with that introduction, sir, turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. So as Dr. Mackey said, this is our FY24 departmental operating budget of state funds, primarily derived from the O and M that comes over in the legislature's appropriation when they have their session every spring. And so we have to load that into the state accounting system ahead of that to accommodate where we look at in a budget for that. So that's what you'll see here. It, it's the standard, it's the same that it's been for the last several years. Just slight increases in some areas that are specific to personnel costs. Obviously includes salary and benefits of the majority of our state funded units that are funded out O and M, including even the stipends that you all receive for being board members of 18,000. And then, you know, executive staff, things of that nature. But it also includes a lot of our ed specialists and people that work in the field. I mean, it just kind of depends on their fund source. So this is just the operating account. It doesn't include some of the others. And so you'll see that the numbers for units down below here at the moment are, you know, they're a little bit larger because that includes some of the other funded sources such as ARI and EMSTE and OMI and a lot of those areas that we have. So a couple of things I'll point out, you know, the, the increase in the beginning budget for personnel costs. Obviously the state legislature approved the 2% pay raise this year. So that reflects some of that coming in there. And then no increases in travel as far as in-state or out-of-state. We do really well with that, that budget line item. Repairs and maintenance, it stays the same. Rentals and leases have gone up a little bit. I had a meeting with state, or with finance department and real property about two weeks ago and they're going to be making an adjustment at the state rate for rent. So we had to accommodate for that in our budget. They haven't finalized that number yet, it's not official. They haven't got it approved yet, but they did indicate that they're to range somewhere from about $1.75 a foot to $82.50 a foot increase coming from them. They've not made an increase, so they told me from the last within 2010. So they've been, they've been a while out doing that, so that's coming. And then utilities, can you catch that same? Services, services have gone up just a little bit. And what's included in that, just so everybody knows, is that's our contract services for information systems. That's the majority of that. Then we also have the contracted services as a state agency that we have to pay for, such as our, use the control office for payments and things of that nature where we send our warrants to. Then also the, the state accounting system that we have to pay our license fee for, legal services, audit services, where we have to pay for the audits that come into us from the department examiners and the other costs that come into those top services. So that's, that's the majority of what the services money would be. Supplies, materials operating, primarily cost of any software, insurance, association dues, books, subscriptions, things of that nature, paper, postage, things of that sort. The grants and benefits, you'll see there it did go up from 3 million to 5 million. And part of that was in the particular O and M fund that we get from the legislature. In '22, they allocated $5 million for unmet capital needs into our O and M account. I mean, that's really money that we grant out to LEAs as things come up. One example, I know we had a, a school a little over a year ago that caught fire in Wilcox County and so we were able to front them some money to get through the immediate need they have. We've had some other instances with flooding and things like that where we do that. And so they made a correction to that this year though, because the language and the dollar amount didn't, weren't in alignment in '22, or in '23, I'm sorry, in '23. And so now in '24, they've made that alignment. So that's why I show it here, showing it to you. It was $5 million all along. They gave the money, but the language wasn't the same. And so we figured that out with them in this past session. They got that, that fixed force there. The remaining parts kind of stayed, are all stayed the same year to year. And then you have kind of an FTE, full-time equivalent of breakdown units. And you'll see we, we do go up in units this year. The primary driver of that is going to be our Office of Math Improvement as that has expanded from its initial implementation last year, which was very low, to adding our state funded regional folks that we'll have. And so we're doing that with our regional supports for OMI where those increases were. And then a couple of others that, that kind of, you know, moved around a little bit where we had some of that. When you see down in federal programs went up a little bit. That's primarily because of the continuation with some AMs money in Esther where we had some retirees and things like that. And that kind of ebbs and flows, but we want to make sure we have enough units identified in there that we can cover that. So, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to get more of a breakdown? I mentioned, it's really called an expense allowance instead of a salary or stipend, I guess, for board members. But when you look at the salary, the personnel costs, our 144,000 total is certainly not much in terms of the overall cost of nearly $28 million in personnel costs. So if you can give me, and I would assume, you know, everyone else would, if they don't want it, they can say, I don't want it. But I would like a better breakdown in terms of, and I understand the, you know, the rental, you don't have to give me, I can do math on the rental property. But have a better understanding of, you know, for example, personnel costs. I see the increase is perhaps close to a million. But if we can look at that to say X percentage is administrative, X percentage is clerical, however you do that with our budgeting.
Right.
I would like to have a breakdown of that. And I'd also like to know, for example, with the supply materials operating, a breakdown with the grants and benefits. It's not a huge amount in the scheme of things, but when you go from 3 million to 5 million, what did we have added to it in terms of the grants and et cetera? But if I could have a breakdown, I sure would appreciate it. I think it makes it a little bit easier to explain to people when they look at, especially with the personnel costs, which I understand, and it varies. A lot of it's federal programs, and that would be another good breakdown to have. Because a lot of those don't, they don't have a lot of longevity. Some federal programs in, and then what do you do with the personnel? But is it temporary? Well, that, that kind of thing would be very helpful.
Yeah, now the majority of the federal programs you see there are going to be the ones that are pretty consistent, like Title I, Title III, some of those things that are around every year from, from DOE. We can do, yes, I can do that, because what we can do on the personnel costs is like, I mean, I, I know for instance, the, the 243.65 units we have budgeted down there, general operating fund, those are the, but, those are the units that are driving that personnel cost, salary and benefits. And so we could do that by classification or something of that nature. Group them together where it's, you know, who are our administrators and then who are our specialists that are working under that and then administrative assistants.
And that would be, that would be helpful to me, especially when I receive questions from constituents about, or if someone makes a blanket statement about personnel. It, it would be nice to have that.
That's good. I appreciate that. And remember that there's a 2% raise given that too. More than half of that is actually a 2% raise, so.
Right, yeah.
But we don't.
But you don't know that, yeah, you always said.
And it's really just an expense allowance.
Right, right, it is. So, now we can do that. It will probably be- It will probably be, well, we can have it, I mean, if nothing else, we can have it ready before the next work session or whatever.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it's, as we get closer to putting it into the actual Stars accounting system, it's kind of, you know, it's a, it can be a bit of a moving number as we go, but we have to present one, and so we do that. And so on that note, I will say this, and it's just as a, it comes out of the budget analysis report that I send out to you quarterly, but it's not broken down in this fashion. But it is something that I look at and my accounting team looks at. Like year-to-date, as we got to the end of the ninth month in our current FY '23, we were running at about 62% to 64% budget. And so, you know, we're, we're well, as far as money goes, we're good, we're there. And so then it becomes that, you know, there are some expenses that'll come in the last quarter here that are unique to the quarter. It's not been a third, a fourth out payment, but, but overall, we're really strong in what we're working out there financially.
That's encouraging, especially in light of the latest inflation numbers and the perspective as you look in the future, it's, I don't think it's going to be as rosy, but I hope I'm on. That's one where I'd like to be.
Yeah.
Dr. Payne, let me just say this. I'm happy to see the fact that we're focusing on the Newer C Act, that we have increased those units with the Office of Math Improvement. Because from 10.50 to '23, it's needed with the work that's being expected.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Board members, any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. We are at 12:02, and I think it'll, we'll break for lunch and be back in 45 minutes. Thank you.
Everybody else will join us in a minute, I hope. Dr. Nike, what's our next?
We have the number three, the alternate teacher preparation organizations. Ms. Harris and Dr. Hampton are going to come up. And as a reminder, this is the rule that we just adopted in the summer because the legislature in the spring of 22 said that we were going to allow alternate teacher organizations to come into the state for the board to adopt rules. And you remember, we spent a lot of time on the rules. But the legislature, I think it's fair to say, did not like the rules we adopted.
They didn't.
Or at least some of the lobbyists did not. And so they amended the rule, but they still kicked it back to us to adopt rules. But they put some more narrow parameters around that rule switch to adopt. And these ladies are going to present the new proposed rule.
Can I say one thing about that? So I attended the hearings on this matter held over in the State House. And I was really shocked to hear a legislator say into the microphone that the State Board of Education intentionally set rules so that we couldn't have alternate preparation programs. And I don't recall us ever having a discussion of intentionally setting rules to prevent a law that they put forward from being in place. So I want to say that because it's that sort of misinformation when it gets out like that, that this body intentionally thwarted a law that they set. That was not the case. It's not the case today. We're back here again with full good faith to do our best to produce policy in line with what their wishes are. So I just felt like I needed to say that on the record because I was in the room and I was really surprised by what I heard.
Well, I have the same concerns because what you did after generous open discussion was adopt rules that brought some parity between our traditional prep programs and our alternative prep programs. But we know, and there were alternate prep programs, by the way, that had already contacted us that did meet all the guidelines the board had set up and they were ready to set up shop and come in. We actually delayed them a little bit because we knew there was this other deal filed and we said, we're not, even though the board's done the rules, we're not going to go ahead and certify people and maybe have to decertify you in two months. So we do have a vendor out there right now that is the current rule that would also meet this rule. We have another vendor that I've already heard from, I won't say, that has concerns about the rule being proposed today. We told them after today we would meet with them and we'll see what their concerns are. But my biggest concern is testing. We have a standard with the praxis we've set and we make every teacher, they either have to pass the praxis or unless they're certified in another state, we accept that state certification record.
I'm sorry, do you mind closing that door? I'm having a hard time concentrating on this conversation.
And so that there, some of the organizations, and I won't say that they want, I mean, some of the ones that would like to come into Alabama, no, do not want their candidates to have to take a test. And they just want, they say, we offer our own online courses and when they pass our courses, we want you to give them a teaching certificate. I have real concerns about that because their online courses, not, we have reviewed them, they don't go through your process of teacher preparation review. They don't necessarily, some of them may go through some accreditation process, but I don't know what that is. And so we feel like making them take our test is some, you know, not a hurdle, but it is a line that says, we know there's a minimum standard.
And it's a confirmation that them coming into us, our kids deserve nothing but the best.
Sure. And I will say that subject did come up in the hearings that I attended. There were several senior legislators who voiced a concern about the testing piece, that they really felt like that needed to be a piece of the alternative, alternate programs. So there was some discussion about that. And so I was happy to hear that because I do feel like if they're not going to be following our process, we have to know that they're prepared. I mean, we just don't want to send unprepared teachers, give them certification and put them in the classroom if they've not even had any form of end of program testing.
And the final legislation did give them an option. So it said that they have to meet our assessments or assessments that are substantially aligned with Alabama standards. And we put in there that, you know, yes, but we'll need to review those before we'll just make a blanket statement and say that it'll be accepted.
It's always easy to say, oh, yeah, it works, just as tough as you are.
Right.
We want to make sure that any assessment, that they use an alternate assessment, that it is fully aligned and comparable to our praxis test and the foundation, foundations of reading test, even more importantly than me, that we just adopted a couple of years ago.
And our pedagogy assessment.
And our pedagogy assessment, which would be our NTBA. Not just that, and this is where, I tell you, some of those lobbyists and some of their friends of mine are probably not be happy, is the way they, the law says it has to be substantially aligned to the standards. But as we know, we just had a discussion on it, the cut score is very important. And so we are interpreting that to mean that the cut score is substantially aligned too. In other words, if I have a test that's quite aligned to the standards, but I let people, you know, I set the cut score so low that almost anybody can get through. Whereas for our test, as you know, we adopt the national, the national cut score, the national recommended cut score. So we will probably have to hire somebody, if a vendor comes to us and says, we want you to look at this test, we'll probably have to hire a third party to come in and evaluate their test and tell them whether it can work or not, or if they would have to adjust their cut score to make it equivalent. But just know that may not make everybody happy, but that is what we're recommending in the rules. And I don't know, Ms. Harris, Dr. Hampton, are there things in the rules that are significant changes?
No, just the fact that we have to stick to what is outlined in the legislation as far as what the requirements are. So that's what we have here for the organizations to meet approval. So those are on the first page, you know, of the rules. They have to document successful operation in at least five states. They have to document successful operation for at least the past 10 years. And they have to successfully have certified at least 10,000 teachers in the United States. So those are the options. But then if they're capacitated, they don't have to meet those. And there are some that are capacitated and they have reached out to us, like, ready to go right now.
How many would you say we have interested in coming into the state?
At least about five that I know of. Not that all of them are capacitated, but at least about five of them that I know of that would like to prepare teachers in the state.
And remember, they're not degree issuing institutions. So these would be who already have a college degree and they're going through, they could apply to go through this pathway. But it would not be a way to go. If a person didn't have a college degree, they would not qualify for this route. Now, I want to point out one other thing too, please, is that if you look at, I don't know if it's the third page, but new, under the new, the available teaching fields. That's the second page, I guess, top of the second page. So we have issued, under the proposed rule, all of, basically all of our teaching fields. I guess it is all of our teaching fields that we issue other certificates under. We had some internal discussion about that because those three at the bottom, collaborative special ed, elementary, and early childhood are where we are the most protective because those are the, teaching are most vulnerable in young children. And that's where I'm really concerned about the testing to make sure that they know the science of reading. Because if they come in from, you know, if they're coming from all over the country, not saying they wouldn't be, but not every state is as balled into and committed to the science of reading as we are. And so we want to make sure that they are committed and their tests would demonstrate that. But we did put this on because those are the three areas we have a great shortage. So, but that's just, I want you to be aware of what you're voting on.
I just have a question. I understand the ones where there's a shortage, but for example, the person had PE as an area where they were trying to get the certification. They would not then take the foundations of reading test.
No, it's only applicable for.
The ones that are listed. So they would have to take only the pedagogy that would, that add to it.
Okay, so here we go.
Okay, here we go.
And so the only thing I wanted to ask, that's the reason the testing component is so critical because what you previously passed, they had to meet our continuous improvement those same testing requirements. And so, that's the only caveat we were able to continue and keep here.
Anything else for anyone? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate the thought.
Thank you.
This would, as the next one comes up, if you're ready, Ms. West, we'll have a administrative code change for charter schools, also based on a change in the law. Logan Cersei is going to bring that to us. Both of these, remember, we come to you in the September work session for a public notice of our intent to adopt, and then they would come back in November for it to be made as permanent rules. If we make significant changes to them, we have to re-announce because we have, that's just the way the administrative procedures act work. So, just to be aware of that, that they would come to you next month for the first one.
Nothing in these would be per consideration for any type of emergency rule for this school year?
No, boy, had not intended to. They could go in as an emergency rule, but I don't think there's necessarily a reason for that.
Anything in there for, okay, thank you.
Ms. Cersei?
Okay. Nice to be here with you today. So, the first change in the amended code would be on the second page, charter operator, we had to add that. It was defined, it was used as a term and under the funding change, but yet it was never defined in the original law. So, it was just a word that was tossed in. And so, we needed to define it so that we were clear what that meant in the, in our guidelines. So, we added that definition of charter operator. It is something that's being used with the Montgomery conversion process, but it was just not something that was ever actually in the law, so we added that. The other changes are on the, I guess it's the fourth page, and we added some language about adding more guidelines because a couple of things changed. They changed that we can no longer call the local authorizer a registration that is going to be an application. Remember, a local authorizer is a local school board that wants to become a charter school authorizer. And the process before has been called registration, and I think they're just codifying what we were already doing. We were already having them apply and having them go through the process that they outlined here. So, I think it's just codifying what was already being done. But what they, the significant change is that now, if you become a local authorizer, at the end of five years, you have to reapply if you want to continue to be an authorizer. So, that was a change that we had to include. And we also had to include the timelines of when, when that would occur. As we have talked about before, law was enacted immediately. So, those who have been charter authorizers for over five years currently, like, for example, Montgomery and Birmingham, they're going to have to go ahead and reapply because they've been a charter authorizer for more than five years. The other change that they added was the annual training for those local board authorizers. So, we're having to make sure that they get that annual training. I was, I was doing that also, so I think that was more codifying something than we were already doing. So, again, if they were to be denied, we had, we're going to have to have some processes and procedures if after five years, if they weren't an authorizer, if they have conversions and startups, things of that nature, we're going to have to come up with guidelines. And some of those we've already done, but we're going to have guidelines and procedures of what that might look like, because we want to make sure that it, to make sure that we had that on, at rules prior to it happening versus after it happened. So, we added that in there. And then, we talked about the distribution of funds. Again, what we were already doing is what they codified into the law. So, most of these are not anything that we were not already doing, it's just now, it's there. So, we're going to have those processes and procedures.
If I may say, of course, I've got to brag on Logan for the great work she's done on this, but through the years, she has worked so hard to make the original charter school law work, and she's worked really hard this summer in the transition to try to help, and she's also, as y'all may know, she's taken on lots more responsibility because she's also working with our STCs. And that has been a smooth transition, thanks to her, and I appreciate that very much. But, but we are handing off some things because, as you know, the law created, this charter commission has a separate state agency, so the board will not be involved in the process of appointing commissioners. The old commission actually pretty much sunsetted this past Tuesday on August 8th because the law said after 60 days, if the governor, lieutenant governor and the other appointing authorities don't either reappoint or replace those people, then they just go away. And so, they, none of those appointments have been made, and so, the mission essentially has ceased to exist at this point because there's no quorum. That would mean, there are two commissioners whose terms have not expired, but they can't make a quorum with just the two of them. So, we have, I mean, we're handing that off, we, we don't have anybody right now to hand it off to. So, for instance, there was, there's money put in our budget for the charter commission because there's no way that legislature could give money to an entity that didn't yet exist. And budget chairs asked me, you know, make it smooth, transfer the money to them, and we will when they, but like, they don't have, but they don't, don't have anybody to transfer the money to at this point. Now, that would be money that's available October 1st.
Well, what about the children starting school? How do they open?
So, the charter schools are fine, and remember, the schools are public schools, they are still under us. And Ms. Cersei and her division will still oversee the schools. So, we'll still, they'll be involved in our monitoring process, they'll have to turn in our financial statements, they get our superintendent memo, so we're treating the schools just as we always have.
And there's a new one that's opening in the bill, and when I was down there for monitoring, I went and made sure that they were prepared for the opening because this is their first opening. So, we're still monitoring them, they're still public schools, so.
Right. So, their education is not interrupted? I'm concerned about the students, not so much.
No, no. I think it's more confusion about what happens now, the dependency. I mean, I had a lot, we do have one appointment, it was sent to me, but I'm not that person anymore, so I...
You had to send it back.
I just sent it home. But, um, but, so we do have one appointment, Anthony Daniels did appoint someone and they sent it to me. But it's, so I think we have some, and I guess everyone's just a little unclear as to what happens next, because there's not a clear cut person to hand it off to.
Exactly. So, they usually, I just give an example, and I probably, I don't want to lay this too much, but it is, it's been a little confusing for all of us because, for instance, when the, uh, the cyber school was set up in Huntsville a few years ago, they put a paragraph in that said, until, you know, here's going to be the board, until the board gets together and, and forms a quorum, the state superintendent will serve as president of the school with the authority to sign checks and do whatever, just so they could get off the ground, and then the board, and so, there was a bridge, period, and we took care of all that for that school, and then we handed it off to the board. They did not put a bridge like that in the charter school law, so it doesn't even say who the appointments are supposed to go to. So, you know, it doesn't even tell the appointing authorities who to send the appointments to. And we did point all these things out before the law was passed, but, but we were told not to worry about it, and so, we didn't, or maybe I have too much anyway, because we don't want there to be confusion, and then that confusion reflect back up on the department of the board when we didn't create the confusion. But at this point, we did an MOU with the commission when they still had a quorum, that for 90 days, we would provide them ongoing legal services and anything they needed. They did use up some of that, they had a meeting, and then they canceled their last meeting, and then they don't have a quorum. So, at this point, it's not clear, you know, what, I mean, there's not anybody to even procure those services. We still have an MOU with them, but they don't exist. So, we're just waiting when all the appointments get in. I've been assured that I'll be invited to, to meet with them and we'll hand it all off when we're, when we have somebody to hand it off to. But I, the reason I brought that up is just because of Ms. West's question. I don't want people to realize the schools themselves, we still totally support because they're public schools. We will make sure, you know, that everything from their bookkeeping to their academics, they meet all the rules, they get the resources they need, they get the money they need for the schools. But for the commission's operation, we're no longer involved in the commission's operation.
And that would be my question, even though there were seconds in office, we still monitor, we still respond on all the site of the schools. Okay.
But we don't have any new ones which would require that transition, that you need time, other, because everything that I recall, is there one?
So, there, there are some that are in their planning year.
Yes.
And it's difficult for them because what I was doing prior to this is I was monitoring them more of a desk audit as they built their school, and then as they got their facility, I would go and make sure they knew about N size and the safety and all that to make sure that they were clear on that. There's not anybody doing that, so we are doing it as a department, but it's not to ensure that they're following their charter contracts, because we're doing the right things for public schools. So, we're still doing it, but I also did it in terms of their charter contract, make sure that they did it on a certain timeline. They had deadlines in which they had to do it according to their contract, and I was that person that made sure that those deadlines were kept. There's an application period that starts, we issued the timeline for our local authorizers, but with the commissions, I had to say pending approval, assuming that they would follow the same timeline, but not knowing, because our local authorizers will issue out their charter applications or RFPs for that very soon. We have several more school systems we'd look recently to come charter school authorizers. And so, we're still having that training and doing that and carrying on, but the commission part of it is not being done because there's no one to do it.
So, is there a deadline for them to have the submissions at all in the law itself?
Yes, they have to release the RMP by November 1.
Okay.
And the renewal, their renewal timeline for the two charter schools that are up for renewal has to recur by October the 15th.
I thought there was something in there that at least provided a deadline for them to start that creation and get their, and hire somebody. I assume that's part of the responsibility in the beginning of.
For the charter school itself?
For the commission.
Oh, for the commission.
And they're to, to transition over from you to, it didn't, the law itself, when they made some of the changes, didn't make a whole lot of sense, just, but it was, they didn't ask for my opinion, and I'm sure they asked for yours, but you can't, they don't always listen.
Um, so, I really kind of keep out of that, so.
I think that's fine. Actually, that was why I didn't want them to ask for my opinion.
No, 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 I try, I try not to get into that, and I mean, I would give my opinion to most anybody if they asked, but I try to stay out of that. And I think that some things that were maybe because of certain situations that maybe happened in Birmingham or Montgomery, but not really what's happening yet for the state at large. I have some great local authorizers, they're doing their training, they're interested, they're trying to think of innovative ways where they might could use a conversion model, and maybe because of things that have happened in the last five or six years, they may have been a little reactive, so I, maybe some of that has not occurred. The rules straighten it, straighten it out.
And the conversion school, the conversion, so a local school board that wants to convert school to a charter school still remains under the department and the board, not under the commission. So, the training for those local operators and all still works with us, but startup charter schools that go to the commission, there's, we won't, we won't be involved in the startup process. Once they, they switch the, they flip the switch and say, yep, this is a, this is a new public charter school, then they become our responsibility on monitoring those kind of things anyway. It's, it's confusing, but...
It's a little, yeah, it's a little confusing right now.
Well, with your experience and background and your connection with them, I think we'll be fine.
I think we, as long as we have the processes and procedures in place for our, our local board authorizers and the schools they start, and then we continue monitoring and providing support for our charter schools because they're public schools, then we'll be fine. I think it's just, we're not going to be as connected to charter contracts that are in place. And I'm hoping that whoever takes that position, that we'll have a good working relationship and that we'll be able to, to share information so that we can do the best by the children.
I would think they would want that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else? Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next item is, items five and six are dealing with proclamations for special months. So, notice that they, the September one or the first one is statewide attendance awareness month, and we actually will declare that in the middle of the month, but September's the month. The other one is about statewide parent engagement month, and they want to bring it to you in the August work session because they want to get it passed before October 1. I, I point that out because remember that October, there are lots of recognitions. This is dyslexia awareness month, and so, anybody, nobody's asked yet, but thought, well, why are we not doing that this year? We generally, they want to do that, they want to pass that resolution on that day and bring some parents because it's the middle of the month. And so, we, you'll see more October being recognized as several things. I think it may be principal appreciation month too. There's two or three things that usually come in October, but those things will be in the September work session. So, I don't know if there are any questions on those. And then, the other resolution next month is for Serena Housley, and of course, Dr. Reynolds is not with us today, but she's from the Athens City School System and most, well, maybe not most people, many of us remember Robert Moore, that is excellent local superintendent, and then the state assistant superintendent for administration and finance for many years. This award, annual award for CFOs is named in his honor, and this year's winner is from Athens City Schools, so we'll make a big deal out of that in, in September.
Any questions?
On number five, is that attendance for students only or students and personnel?
So, this is student attendance, because it's statewide student attendance month. I know we, we had some questions about teacher attendance too. We actually are, have finalized or pretty close to finalized that, that collection document that's going to go out, and we'll, districts are going to have to report teacher attendance from last year, and it'll be pretty specific by category. So, where are they out, did they take sick leave or personal leave? Not identifying individual teachers, but we'll get large numbers and probably will be, I think October meeting is when work sessions, we're planning on bringing that to you, is that right? I look at Dr. Payne, Ms. Martin, it may be November, but it's a good bit of work because the districts all have different systems, so they have to, they have to do a little bit of handwork, but I'll, I'll brag on our technical team and Dr. Payne and Ms. Martin over there, because what they did was, they were able to go in and create some reports so they don't have to hand key in everything. It's going to automatically collect it, they'll submit it in a Excel sheet, and then we'll be able to go through it and sort it and give you numbers. But this is student attendance.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, the, um, the update today is, several of you have asked about the PCG report and kind of, that's all where it is. I asked Ms. Terry Morgan to come up, and you, I think we have copies of it, we may have copies. There they are. We pass those around. I know we've sent these to you already, but I wanted you to get a hard copy. So, I'm going to give a little history. I promise, I know my history lessons get long, but I'm going to try to make this one short. You'll recall that the legislature passed a bill and, and not passed a bill, but anyway, they contracted through the Department of Public Examiners to hire a public consulting group out of Boston to come in and do a review of the department and the board. It was a contentious time, to say the least, and I think everybody remembers that. But, but we worked with them because we were charged with working with them, and eventually, I would say, I think we, we got some good out of it, we made lemonade out of it. But the initial report, if you remember, came out, the, coincided with the election in March of 2020, when the public voted to retain the board of superintendent on a 70/30 vote. And I want to open scouts, but y'all remember that. So, the report came out in connection with that, and, and the closure of the schools for COVID, all happened in the same few days. So, at the time, ultimately, we're dealing with COVID, we kind of pushed, we didn't do anything much with the report. But then, the legislature, before they adjourned that year, extended the contract for another year, and then they, one more time extended it. So... time extended it. So, so we eventually, we took the report, we worked with the consultants from PCG and said, okay, we've got a, we, we're going to stay, board's going to stay. So we got to work together to, again, make this and eliminate something that can help us all move forward. And so we developed together a tracker. Y'all have seen the tracker. It had like a million items on it. And every, you know, we had manager of everything. So everybody had to go to, some of them were fairly simple items. Some of them were very complex things, like building a whole new way of training special education teachers. I mean, it was huge. We had to do another RFP to meet that thing. And I think it ended up being like, you know, 10 different sections to it. So some of them were big, complex issues. Some of them were, were simpler. But over the time, we have clicked off almost all of those boxes. And we, we, we've accomplished those tasks, dozens and dozens of tasks. One of my complaints has been that when PCG would make reports back to the legislature, once the task was accomplished, they just, it just disappeared because we were not working on it. Well, I kept saying, well, I want the legislature to see that we've done 90% of the things that were in the original report. Like we, we just keep, we're keeping taking things off. And so they did that last year. They, you know, kind of an end of the, end of the contract, whatever the legislature. This was the last piece here that included some things to ongoing. So we, so you see some are complete. These are not all the complete ones. These were the, only the ones on the most recent to do list. So we updated, they updated it, they updated it every six months. And so this was the last list to be updated. And you see the ones in kind of a tan color that were kind of ongoing. So we took those ongoing ones, Ms. Morgan, and we've combined that with our strategic plan to make sure that we're continuing that. The best thing to me that came out of it was this idea of the tracker. So we had a, you know, timelines and who's in charge of what, who reports what to whom, and which communities are working together. And that was a really good organizational structure. And so we continue to try to keep that going for the ones we're still working on, plus some other things that we wanted to work on, that we put together. But anyway, it, the contract ended in May. The contract, remember, was never held by us. It was held by the Department of the Examiners to the legislature. Basically, a contract to the legislature held by the examiners. And we just worked through it. But all of this started back in 1819, I guess. And it's finished, contract ended in May and did not get extended.
Eighteen nineteen.
I haven't, I'm old, but not that old.
And not the year, 2018, 19.
Yeah, not eighteen nineteen.
Not eighteen nineteen. When I said that, I thought that doesn't sound right, but that's fine. Yes. Back then, way back then, that far back. So we did, obviously, over the time, they brought in different consults in different areas, as I said, because it was far reaching into every area of the department. They did, I don't have any site visits. I'm going to say over that time, they probably did six site visits, maybe. They were trying to do three site visits a year during COVID. They didn't do any site visits. They, so we went through a period there where we only did web, kind of web visits. So anyway, that's, that's kind of that. But I think the question from the board was, well, what, you know, that's, we file that on the shelf, but what are we doing going forward? And make sure that the legislature knows we took it, we took it seriously and we're not like, oh, we're not dealing with that anymore. So we are still, still working. As I said, though, we've kind of combined it. So what we asked with that, in light of those questions from this last month is for Ms. Morgan just to kind of go through where we are and what we're doing going forward. And if that's okay, I'll just let her do, their history lesson's over, and I'll let her do the quick presentation.
Thank you and good afternoon. We have used, since I think, since I think about 2020, we've been, we've had our strategic plan in place. And since this strategic plan was developed, we've had PCG here. We've had other things that we're going to utilize to update our strategic plan, supplement it a little bit. We continually work to meet the objectives that we set forth in the strategic plan to enhance and supplement our plans. PCG, like Dr. Mackey said, we waved goodbye in May of 2023, gone but not forgotten. We, as you review this, it's, it's a really good recap of what we've been through, where we've been, and, and actually gives us a roadmap for where we're going. As you look through this, you'll see the completed is in green. Like Dr. Mackey said, these are what, the, the last few objectives that we worked with them. And the ones that say partially completed, I check with these sections or whoever it was the leader or the point person for these and just see where we are and make sure we're completed. The first one I'll look at is this 1.7 developed science course of study. Well, of course, course of studies are things we continually work on and it's one, one department or another. So we'll continue, we'll always work on courses of study. It's just what subject matter we're working with. But we're taking these and moving forward with them. So when it says that's complete, completed and partially completed, we're taking those next steps, but we're incorporating them into our strategic plan. We also have had new legislation that's been passed over the past few years that are affecting our strategic plan. This is just a gathering of the legislation, legislation that we've had. But we're incorporating these also into our strategic plan. When you talk about school safety, we've got extension of what we can do with school resource officers. We've got now the school principal leadership and mentoring act. We also consider this journey to the top 30. With this plan, we have developed an education initiative and strategy council. And here are the members of the council listed up here. This group meets on a monthly basis and working on making sure that we keep this going. And of course, our objective is, and the governor's real excited about moving up into the top 30 rather than into the bottom. So pursuant to what we're dealing with the top 30, we've got Dr. Mackey, of course, we've got our instructional deputy, Ms. Martin, and this month from OMI, we've got somebody from Hamst, or the director of OMI, Hamstein, ARI, school improvement. So every month we touch on where we're, what our objectives are and where we're going from there. We've always worked within these five priority pillars that we have, academic growth and achievement, college career workforce readiness, safe and supportive learning environment, highly effective educators, customer friendly services. And you get, at these work sessions, you get reports from these, from certification, you may get a report from school improvement. But we're constantly, of course, updating those. One thing I would say is the word complacency is not in our vocabulary here. Everybody works toward improving and offering more services, better services to the students of Alabama. So when we put all of these objectives and all of these initiatives that we have from all of these different things, we're working to update and integrate these guidelines and priorities from those resources to update our strategic plan. And we look forward to presenting you in the near future with our strategic, right now it looks like this. You know, we've got, we've got our trackers and we've got what we're going to be doing with this. But we're looking forward to updating this document for you all. And so we can see where we've been, where we are now, where we're going with education.
Can you provide, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, can you provide that in the interim? What you've just presented to us in the interim in?
Yes, ma'am.
The 2020 strategic plan?
Well, whatever it is, you said you're revising it and you'll have it in the fair, but whatever you presented today, that's it.
Would you go back a slide?
And then, no, keep going, one more. Am I missing, is there not a special education person on that? There's not.
Why not?
Well, we have Ms. Martin there and she, she covers all of the instructional sections that we have. But when we got our journey to the top 30, it names specifically some, some of our depart, our sections that they wanted to represent on the council.
Okay.
But Ms. Martin covers absolutely everything.
Well, I know she does. And I'm not saying she doesn't, but that is so specialized and critical that, that worries me a little.
One of the things on this, Ms. Martin wants to say, so they, you know, the governor has her journey to top 30. We're always trying to, obviously, we're, we're meeting our strategic plan, but she's got her plan. We don't want to have opposite plans. And so that's why we, we keep in constant communication. And they want to do that too. She, she's been adamant that she wants her plan to align with the work the board's doing and the initiatives we've got undergoing in the department. So one of the reasons we did this back earlier in the summer or spring, I felt like, you know, I was always meeting with, meeting with Dr. Shields, Sean Stevens, I just see the two of them. But I met with Karen Anderson, a meeting with Shanthea Washington, which I love. But then I always feel like, well, I learned something from a meeting with Dr. Shields that, that Ms. Washington also needs to know. And so we need to once a month, get everybody that's leading one of our major initiatives, obviously, I'm stopped by science reading, together with our group and us talk about part of the thing. So this is the group that's been meeting. Now, you raise, you raise a really good point because we've had times we've had to bring other people in and say, well, we want to talk about something else. And so we just have to, we bring somebody else in. But in, we may need to expand that core group. But it has really good discussion because what I find, now, may not be, everybody else may leave, may come in thinking, my God, why do I have to go to another meeting with a superintendent? But for me, what I hear is how the work OMI is doing coordinates with the work that school improvement's doing, coordinates with the work that MTSS is doing with special ed and how it's, you know, all fitting together. I would reiterate, they are not waiting to once a month to talk to each other. But I was always hearing it one at a time. And then Mr. Moore and Mr. McClendon, they wanted to start to review what we were doing. And they were like, well, can we come here, what's going on? So that we're not requesting additional meetings to find out what's going on with you. So it's been very good to have just those discussions. We've only been doing it once a month. You look at that list and that we have found, I don't know how many months we've been meeting, but four, five, six months, that we've found any time that everybody can get together is pretty amazing. So we've set kind of a regular trying to meet on, when we meet, meet on Monday afternoons. More people seem to be in town on Mondays. But we've had to move some around too. But that's to, you know, that, her plan that she announced in the, for her last term, that she announced at her, I guess, the, not the inauguration, but state to state. We've tried to take those things and put them into with our plan because obviously those are initiatives that we're, we're undertaking. We're the ones who are doing like the CCR stuff. So to reiterate, like a good one is CCR. So y'all passed a rule, said we're going to require everybody to have college career readiness credential to graduate high school. Legislature amended the rule a bit as they, they, they said, we're going to do what the board wants, but we want to speed it up by two years. That's fine. Then the governor had some initiatives she wanted to do around that. And then we, we were able to get through the help of a lot of y'all, and I appreciate you making calls, get $25 million in CCR grants from the legislature, some of the supplemental budget, some of the regular budget. And so you see how all those things are, they're separate pieces from the legislature, pieces from the governor, the core pieces from the board, but they're all toward the same thing, getting all of our kids graduate CCR. So we put them in one, we want to get this done. And this are our, this is our timeline. And this is the responsible people who have that information and working on getting those grants out now. So you've got so many things going on in such a huge department, that coordination helps a lot.
And we are finding there's more coordination than we realized between sections and.
Work members?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the section that says effective educators. And I see where we have only one category that's complete. Can you share with me what's being done to address 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7?
Yes, actually, we have the ATAT, that the teacher growth tool that we've had for teacher evaluations. That's ongoing. It's, it's partially complete, but we're, we're implementing it, but we're also training everybody on how to use that. The teacher mentoring program, I'm really excited to say that we have developed online teaching resources. It's not going to be complete until the fall of 2024, but some of those online resources are already available. That's just when they're going to complete all of these. But teachers can, in the evenings, weekends, or if they're leisure, when they're not paying to have classes, they could, it's on demand. So that 3.6 is in the process, but we know that we're, are ending up the contract to provide these is in, in, I think it's October 2024. The creative approaches and teacher education prep programs.
It's pretty much ongoing. I don't know if you can put an end date on that. So what you're doing right now with UTEACH is a piece of that. Actually, what you're doing with the, what we just talked about with the teacher, alternative teacher programs is a part of that. But that's one that's hard to say, you know, by January of 2025, we, we're not doing any more innovative stuff because everything, you know, it's just hard to, some of these have been on the tracker for a long time. A lot of work's been done on them. But I don't know that you can ever turn them green unless you want to say, you know, they're substantially complete because the, the mechanism for that to happen is in place. And they are, the programs are now bringing us innovative ideas like they did with UTEACH. And hopefully we'll see more and more of that. ATAT, I do want to say 3.4 and 3.5, this is the first year that that's required. It's been a pilot. And so I know it's, it says it's finalized training, support, ongoing implementation. So that's why that's green. It's the first year. I think that Leadership Academy is also done now. I don't know, they're, they're, they're being, it's happening this fall.
Exactly. But we're also complementing that with the new law that came out as well. So we're trying to make certain that the training for the administrators are really in sync with the assistant principal and principals and all of that. So it is another one that's partially complete because it keeps growing. We're, we have one outline of what we're doing. And then we get another new law. So we're trying to make sure that it's not just something else, that everything is lining up. So it, if that answers the...
Technically, I'm sorry.
It does partially. I guess my, my wonder, I'm looking here where it says expand the Alabama teacher mentoring program. And I guess I want to just hear, what is that going to look like?
We're excited about that work, Dr. Chestnut. We've been really communicating with our LEAs on that expansion and doing a deep dive, working through Dr. Veronica, under the leadership of our new addition, we threw a lot at her when she came, Dr. Hampton, to revamp that program and to work on ways to really fund it. Because we're really having a hard time right now with all of the alternative pathways that we've created. We're including all of that into the mentorship and trying to make sure that the funds are there to pay for that. But the entire, we have incorporated ATAT skills into that and made it a two-year approach, whereas any district with an emergency certified or alternative certified new teacher is able to participate with it. So that was the first thing that we were charged to do is to move it from a one-year approach to a two-year approach. And then from there, we started looking at the feedback, the surveys that were coming in about the quality of the program and being very intentional and looking at what were we providing. So we've worked with work groups with this great team on redesigning what that looks like so that it can be more beneficial to the teachers we're getting today and not from what we've done in the past.
What kind of feedback have we gotten? Because I know it's going to impact retention and recruiting. What, what kind of feedback have we gotten?
Do you have any examples that you can just share with me that from the mentors? Yeah, the mentor teachers? Let's, let's start with the mentor, the mentors themselves, and then we'll go back to those teachers.
We don't have feedback since we've made the changes.
Not the changes before.
Okay.
That prompted our changes, the feedback that prompted, for instance.
What we, what we find a lot of is that just the mentees were not assigned mentors. Period. So although they were supposed to have a mentor, they would not, they were not being compensated for, for, for being a mentor. compensated for, for, for being a mentor, they, they didn't have the necessary supports in place at their, at their LEA level, so we went back, and so we're putting some things in place that are non-negotiables, and more accountability measures in order for them to serve as mentors. So, yeah.
And there was an overload, there was an overload on the mentors, you may have had one teacher that was trying to serve three mentors, so make mentees. Trying to make certain that that time was there, but then that was the district scheduling though, so we're putting those things in place to make certain that quality time can be there for that, I'm going to call it master teacher, to really be a mentor to that mentee. So those were, so just a lot of.
And some of them just didn't have the individuals to be the mentors.
Right, that, that's the part I was going to highlight, in some schools, there aren't the experienced teachers to actually serve as mentors. So one of the things that was opened up as a result of that is for individuals who were retired veteran teachers to also serve as mentors, because they have the content expertise, they have the experience in those areas, and they now can serve up to five mentees, because they're not with the day-to-day teaching duties, and they will have more time to devote to working with those mentees. So it is continuously evolving based upon the feedback that is, that is received, to look at what's the best way. Another thing that, that very intentionally we're looking at for the upcoming years, is having specific areas that we're working with those mentees, the mentors are working with the mentee teachers on, we, we looked at the ATIT and we see the correlation with that, with the EATPA even, that the pre-service teachers are, are working with. So as they become better trained with that, we will turn around and look at that full cycle of development, where they're getting trained pre-service, but also continuing those tenants through their in-service act that could benefit both the mentee teacher as well as those mentor teachers who will serve as cooperating teachers even, so that they understand better what those candidates coming out of the pre-service realm are working with. So we're trying to look at the entire dimension along the continuum now.
That was going to be my question, because the LEAs normally would determine the mentors and the mentees, but then I heard you talk about, now we're looking at retirees, so are we looking district by district to determine where mentors are needed and mentees? I'm trying to understand the concept, I hear what you're saying, it sounds great, but how are we determining where we're going to have mentors and where we're going to have mentees, knowing in the past, LEAs sort of determine, so I'm trying to see, how do we fit into that picture?
LEAs are still determining where they need the mentees, one of the things that we're looking at though, is that because there were not those experienced teachers there, how can we be more inclusive, so that those individuals that do have their requisite set of skills needed to serve as a mentor can come in to, to operate in that capacity? And so as we look at it, we are also looking at what happens if, if turnover as well. So those individuals at the district level who have been trained as the LEA representatives, when they leave that district, how do we ensure that we have continuity in that district, so that the mentor program does not fall apart? So all of those are dynamics that we're, we're looking at at this present moment.
So beyond that, we're looking at each district and new teachers that they get each year, so we're hearing, and we're keeping data on that to determine.
We're looking at that data more closely now, because of the attrition level we have with some of our school districts, that turnaround is leading us to continually have to have a cycle of mentee teachers being trained. So, so we're looking at those dynamics, even with air prep and other things, so we can see, how can we look at what is leading to this, so we can have better data to inform you and inform those districts as well.
Thank you.
And, and just to touch on that as well, as far as career tech is concerned, some of the things that we've had to do as a system, or that career tech has had to do as a system, and locating mentors in other districts, because they just did not have individuals with the expertise in those, in their current school districts, so we, yeah.
And also, as a reminder, the feedback that we received from the individuals prior to the redesign of the program, this is the feedback, and this is why we're making those changes, when we started asking those questions, why you don't have any, and then we started getting staff and reports, they didn't have the quality in some of the areas, because they were emergency certified teachers or alternative teachers, and just did not have the necessary skill sets to serve as mentors. And another layer to this, which is outside of Siobhan, as a reminder, we have jump-started our prep program for those emergency certified teachers, so we started with those districts who had a certain percentage of certified teachers in their districts, so this is quality professional development, just like mentoring, with an outline program every week of what they will, for instance, we're going to start off with ethics, because we know that these teachers are teachers that came from being a manager last week, because they had a bachelor's degree, now they can be an emergency certified teachers, teacher, and they don't understand that concept. So we're building into a 12-week program for them, that every Wednesday, there's a different topic that they're able to embrace, to help them start this opportunity, and this is on top of the mentoring program. So we're trying to make certain that every piece of support is available, and this great opportunity is provided by those individuals here. And the way the schedule was organized, I'm just going to throw Bonnie, I'm looking at her over there, one of the sections would be on literacy, okay? What the expectations are, we have Karen sitting there, the next one would be on the numeracy act, what does this mean for me? You know, we're going through courses of study, what is a course of study? What does that mean for my classroom? So these are just examples of the topics that are coming in, so we're layering the work, and then we're also doing additional work with our recruiters, we have two great recruiters that are still training, and Siobhan have added them to this layer of work as well, to make certain those needs are being met. So there's a lot of work going around that, going around those topics, that's why you're going to see partially complete, because when we think we're there, something else comes up, and we want to make certain it's continuous, and that we are responsive to what we're hearing from out in the field. We can easily say we've done those books, and then something else comes up, or a new law comes up, and we just want to make certain we're meeting the needs of them.
Ms. Seigle, if you had a question?
Right, the one that really draws my attention is the 2.5, talking about what are the intervention practices for the chronically underperforming schools?
So those are, remember, this was presented in May, so that was considered complete when they left, because that was about the presentation, we got last month, the month before, when A.J. Buckner came and talked about the work in school improvement, so that was, they really wanted to work with us in the school improvement process. Dr. Shields is here, so she might, she led that before, I don't know if y'all know, A.J. presented the board, did an amazing job, and then left us two weeks later to go meet the deputy superintendent in Huntsville. So we're in the process of trying to replace him, but that process that we put in place, that is that.
Okay.
So that one's green now, and I'll tell you, another one that's green is 5.9, because the CCR rule, they actually said, they say in the narrative, that the only reason they didn't make it green was because the legislature was considering that bill about whether to change it to 26 and 28, and once that was decided, to move it to green. So that's, so just remember, these are, some of these have been made green this summer, but this is the report they left us with. Now, we've added new items ourselves, so because of other things, like Ms. Morgan said, that we've, like, there's nothing, nothing in here at all about the new principal and assistant principal act, so there's a whole new act about how principals are going to be trained and certified, and there's a stopping program for them, and a curriculum for them, well, that's not in this, because that didn't exist during this time, but we've added those things on, and so the process will, will keep going.
Right behind you, everything.
Yeah, yeah, it's just not in this one, because, and I appreciate, I know she mentioned that, that, you know, a lot of the work we're doing is not there, because it's new work, but this'll, that'll be sunsetted, but the work will keep, will keep going.
One last question, I'm sorry. Under 1.14, develop the statewide plan for youth of education, where students receive the special education services, this aid is complete, have we seen that plan, or is it going to be shared with us? Understand, there's curriculum and instruction, 1.14?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about, I couldn't find it up here. So that is the, now, we could have, Ms. Morton, I've turned it, well, Shanthea Washington here? Yeah, Ms. Washington, we could have the lead come if you want to, I think she did come give a pretty general overview of that a couple of months ago, but that's where we went in, did the RFP, resulted in like 10 contracts with, and some of those, y'all, we talked about those pretty extensively at the time, and they kind of reorganized all the PD and the way they do, special ed, that's that piece, but she could certainly, Dr. Chalmers should talk about it a lot better than I, I don't know, Ms. Washington, if you can add more.
The contracts with plan.
So basically, with the inclusion plan, we did a framework that is, I know that you heard A.J. speak of our collaboration with OSI, as it relates to looking at targeting specific schools, to take a look at their special education program, and ensuring that certain evidence-based strategies are implemented, one, one being specifically, looking at how they are including students within their, within their everyday, day-to-day operation, inclusive of general education classrooms. And one of our big pieces is student professional development, just like Dr. Matt just spoke of, which is looking at high leverage practices to be utilized within the schools, to ensure that every single child is touched as it relates to strategies that would be effectively implemented for those individual students, that would be considered students with disabilities, and ensuring that we take a look at, making certain that in the plans themselves, as they do, as they develop their daily plans, like their continuous improvement plan, that they address that particular vulnerable population. So that is how we're working with to implement.
Yes, statewide.
And I think that is actually, one of the reasons, I've been cutting off, but if I understood Dr. Chalmers right, that was when the feds came in, you know, last month, we recognized her because we had no red flags for the first time in forever, and it's because of this work.
Okay, that's what I was trying to see, what was going to be.
That the fed saw that as progress, and so they didn't put us in needs of improvement for the first time ever, so.
Okay.
Could you circle back to when you planned on having all this pulled together for the board, did you say? Right now, it's all in kind of tracker form, and?
Right, but we would like to have a completed document, actually, I believe PCG said by 2024, but we're aiming for it this year.
Okay. And do you feel like it's in any sort of format right now, like, like this, I, I think this is just fine, how many legislators have requested this?
None have requested, we know of.
Okay, so I think because last year, we had so many folks saying, what is your plan, you don't have a plan, we actually had a really robust plan.
With this?
Yes, so.
No, you're talking about the tactical plans, not district.
I'm talking about the tactical plans, so I think it would be appropriate, going into this next legislative cycle, whether PCGs come back or not, that we communicate what our plans are, and we take it to them if they're not requesting it from us.
We will have it well before the legislative session, what about that? I'll commit that, Ms. Morgan, make it happen. We'll get it back to you first, and we'll get them, that is a great idea, because this, one of the, I want to be cautious, but one of the tricky things to this is that they didn't work for us, they were working with us, but they would always, and some of y'all know, that more than once, I did not see the plan, like, one time it got to the press before it got, before I knew there was an update out there, and because it went to another state agency, and then they gave it to legislators, and then sometimes we would get a copy of the update, and sometimes we wouldn't. Now, we fixed that, because they agreed that when it went to legislature, we would get it, and then we forwarded it to you the same day we would get it, but, but it took a while to get that process in place. So we want to make sure that we're, I say that to say two things, one, we don't know how many legislators, when they forwarded it to the legislature, I don't know what that meant, I know it went to certain committee chairs initially, I know it was sent to Senator Marsh, and it was, I think, I think it was his responsibility to distribute it, I don't know how that worked, so I don't know who all got it, and then, of course, he wasn't in the Senate, and I don't know, I don't know that process, so maybe they have a way to get it to every legislator, and I'm sure they get a lot of emails, but we will, we will take responsibility now and make sure we get it.
My concern is, we had so many freshman legislators in this last session, that probably had no idea that their body had spent $800,000, taxpayer dollars, for a report, in which we were working alongside PCG to bring them what they wanted, which was a plan. And now we have that, and have completed so many action items. And so I would like for us to send to every freshman incoming legislator, the work that we've done, we cannot wait for them to ask, that we can never be asked.
Well, and as you said, not this report, our own report.
Our, our own report, but I think this support, the work that this department has been doing.
But I don't want that to take the place of what we, I want them to hear from us.
Right, right, and I, I think if we wait for them to ask, well, it's not going to happen.
But sign that to our legislative team, because that helps to connect them, which is something that should do anyway.
There is one.
Yeah.
And Ms. West, I know that Ms. Morton mentioned, and Ms. Short, that they were working on a document.
Right.
That would have all of the plans that we had asked about, the reading, the math, and all of that, so we should be able to have that to show.
These are good tactical timelines.
I want to know that we're doing things, and we have been, I just would love for that to be communicated.
Right.
Communication.
Well, we have it already, it's in place, so it would be logical rounds to take, I would think, and we'll put a letter from the superintendent and put all of our names on there, so they can continue to see our names, because if you have a board, and you have a superintendent, you have more strength, because you have more people, and you have different districts that are represented, and make us visible along with the superintendent, but also, I think that's a good way for you to connect on a continual basis.
Well, thank you, Dr. Mackey, did you have anything else?
I have one thing that is not on the agenda that I just want to publicly say, and some of you have asked about this, but there's been some confusion in the public, the press, not our press who are here today, but about archery and gun safety.
Oh, my God.
So just know that, that the administration in Washington did, they, it's not, they've interpreted a congressional act to say that federal money issued under ESDA, so that'd be Title I, Title II, Title IV, cannot be used to support any programs where children are, I don't know the exact wording, but basically exposed to or taught about weaponry. And that has been expanded in their rule to include hunter safety programs, elementary archery programs, programs like historical reenactments, where people might have a rubber battle axe or something, so, but just know, in Alabama, we do not spend federal funds on those things, but we do spend state and local dollars on it, we're still going to do them, so we'll still have all of our hunter safety programs, we're going to have all of our archery programs, we're going to have all of our PE, you know, elementary PE teachers that want to teach archery can still do it, we're trying to get that out, because we don't spend, we don't spend title dollars on that, so it's not a threat to any of our programs, but if you hear that any teacher said, I can't teach archery anymore, will you please have them contact, not Eric Mackey, but Melissa Shields and her department, because somebody there, or somebody in that, or she, Mr. Stevens, somebody, because we'll clarify that. And if there is somebody somewhere that is using, you know, their Title IV dollars to teach archery, because they only teach it to children who don't speak English for some reason or something, then let us know, and we will help them find funds to replace those funds, so nobody loses anything.
Junior ROTC.
That was my question.
ROTC is not affected, and, and we, you know, we, but I, every day, I, I keep getting it out, I've talked to the parks, the conservation commissioner several times about it, we're trying to get the information out, but we still get questions about it, so, and it is confusing, because on the national press, there's been some national stories about it, so just help us get that out, we're still doing hunter safety, we're still doing archery, it's not affected any of our programs that we know of. The only thing I was told is that there is a chance, but again, we haven't found one, that there is a non-school program, like a YMCA program, that may be using a federal grant. that there is a non-school program like a YMCA program that may be using a federal grant to do like after-school hunter safety and that might be effective. But again, no, we haven't found one of those yet, but if we find one and they want to keep functioning, we will try to help them find some state dollars to keep that program going. And then we have the retreat coming up and I think Dr. Richardson has some information on that.
And that'll be our last hour today.
All right. Good afternoon, again, board members. Uh, we are excited about our retreat that's coming up at the end of the month. Uh, we will be in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. On August 29th, we are to arrive and check in around 3:30 at the Almite. It is a new, um, hotel they have there. I understand it's very nice. We got the best rate there when we compare it with other hotels. So it will be a hundred and nineteen dollars a night. I would like to thank Mr. Markham, uh, along with Dr. Daria and the team in Tuscaloosa who are helping us, you know, help us get this together. From 4:15 until 6:00, we'll have board discussion about the budget, which we started today. And we know that Dr. Payne will have more extensive information for us at that time. Dinner at 6:30 will also be in the hotel because they have a restaurant there. Uh, the next morning, we will have breakfast from 8:15 until 8:45. And, uh, we have reached out to the legislators that are in the Tuscaloosa area to see how many of them can join us for breakfast. From 8:45 until 9:15, we will have greetings from Dr. Daria, who's with the city, Dr. Johnson, uh, with the county. We have someone from the School of Education and also we're looking at other distinguished guests coming also. Then from 9:15 until 10, um, a continuation of our board discussion to look at legislative priorities and any other issues we want to discuss. 10 o'clock, we'll break for room checkout. 10:30 to 10:45, we would travel to New Heights, which is a program that Dr. Daria wants us to see there, which is a wraparound service that they have going on in Tuscaloosa. And then from 10:45 until 12, and if we have to adjust that we can, we will be touring. It may not necessarily be that long, but we will be in that space. We will remain there for lunch from 12 until 12:45 and at 12:45, we'll have closing comments. Any questions about our agenda and what we're going to be doing? And as we said last month, we will be in Tuscaloosa.
Where legends are made.
Where legends are made. Thank you. Thank you for my report.
It is an autographed, so it's.
Yes, it is. It's owned by the Sabres. Yes.
Yeah, and Marriott.
Yes, it is. Marriott, I think.
Yes. So you can get points for it too.
Okay, great. But don't forget where legends are made. Thank you.
No, keep your head down.
I'll say it again.
I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did you say our distinguished guests, is it somebody very distinguished?
Very distinguished. I think we'll be happy to see the individual. Or maybe a relative.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson.
Thank you so much.
For planning this all up and Mr. Markham, we appreciate so much you assisting with that.
Yes.
Um, is everybody ready to adjourn?
Yes, we are.
All right.
Thank you.
I like your handling of the camera.
Yeah, we're not going to go crazy with the gas. Thank you.
Thank y'all.